Yeah, no. To technical purposes. I'm afraid if I close the screen, I will stop. No one will be able to see me. I just didn't want to do it in half court, so I'm going to do it on. So, thank you.
No problem.
See, I just can't read the cards.
Oh, yeah.
He just found the picture. I see you. Yeah, I see that's the. Oh, there we go. Can I see that? Uh, replacement this afternoon.
Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance, being LFI, Liz Biddle. Thanks for doing that, Liz. Welcome to our second regular May 2024 meeting of the Village of Boston's five board trustees. Let's start with minutes. Can I get a motion that the minutes of May 13, 2024 be approved? Trustee Baskin, trustee Fandesa, discussion. All favor. Opposed, motion carries. It's time for public comment on agenda items only, three minutes per speaker. Actually, I know you want to do an introduction, though, just to make sure that you can get done, because I don't know how long the rest of this will go. Why don't you go first, if everybody's okay with that, just so that she can get kind of released from here.
Good evening, everyone.
Put the little button there.
There you go. Oh, hi. How are you? Ashley, what's community emergency for? We are here tonight to introduce our new chief of operations, Brian Terry. He comes to us with an awful lot of experience, especially where we need it most for our agency. We've been through a lot of transition and he's just kind of separated and is helping out. It's perfect. Tell him a little bit about himself.
Apparently, I'm telling you who the guys got themselves. So, my name is Brian Terry. I've lived and worked around Saratoga County for about 15 years total. I've been a paramedic for about, it'll be 20 in August. I've had a bunch of supervisory, administrative, all sorts of positions throughout the Capitol District. I'm hoping to be able to use it to make our agency better than it is. So, not that it needs much more work, but, you know, I mean, there's always, there's always a pinch here, a pinch there that you can work out, so hopefully that helps us improve and provide better quality care for the community.
Brian, there have been some concerns about response times now that the moves have been made to Milton Center, basically. How is, how are you, in this role, going to make sure that folks in the Boston side of your service area are not affected by that?
So, we are monitoring it, just comparing, just outside of the previous compared to now. At this point, we haven't seen a significant change. One of the bigger issues is going to be, we obviously do priority dispatch, so if it's a non-emergent call, it gets dispatched as an Alpha, as opposed to an emergent call gets dispatched as a Charlie or a Delta or an Echo. When you have those non-emergent calls, there are essentially no lights or sirens. It does become a little bit of an issue, because you have to get from one side of the village to the other or through the village. And obviously, with traffic and stuff, that could pose a little bit of a problem. We've been monitoring the times, we haven't seen any significant increases. It does give us a little bit of leeway to sneak out the Boston side, going out middle line and that way a little quicker as well. So, all in all, it seems to be a wash at this point, but we're going to continue to monitor it, just to make sure that there's no significant impact.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And thanks for your service, both of you.
And let's go to our normal public comment agenda items only. Thank you for your patience on that. Anybody in the audience? I saw Liz first, so I'll hear you.
Liz Quorum, City Night, hi. I just had a question about use of the park by different organizations. Is any organization at all allowed to use the park if they need, you know, the insurance and all those requirements? Or is it up to administration to decide?
That's certainly a poor decision ultimately, but the general view is we check with our insurer to see what they recommend. The risks are weighed. If there isn't insurance for some reason present, again, the village would have to take on the liability at that point in time. So, it's a balance. We generally go favor organization having their own insurance. If it's a village event, obviously, the village's insurance carries that event in that situation.
In terms of religion or message, we can't, we can't restrict.
No, that's not what approaches it all. Okay. I might for next.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike, I could reach you, Mike Russell Street. Just a question about the treasurer's report that was posted online with the region materials. The report indicates that May sales tax receipts, I believe for the county as a whole, were $13 million. And then it's explained that that amount is $285,000 higher than the $13 million received in May last year. And then it's a 15% increase. And I just don't follow those numbers, so at some point, if you could clarify or explain for me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. We'll, we'll see if our treasurer is still available to, it's something you guys want to some meetings here, so we'll see if you can be able to explain that later. Also, by the way, if anybody on Zoom would like to participate in this public comment session, excuse me, then, and now that would be the best time to do it, as we round out things here in the room. Anybody else in the room for agenda items only? Seeing no hands here, seeing no hands on Zoom? Again, we'll move on to consent agenda. Does anybody want to remove any of the consent agenda items? Can I get a motion to approve the items on the following consent agenda? Trustee Fandesa, trustee Price Bush, discussion. All favor. Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion that an agreement between Dago Cleaning Systems Incorporated and Village of Boston Spa be authorized for cleaning services at the Boston Spa Public Library? The library board has approved this change, requested this new agreement. This motion, it authorizes the mayor to execute the agreement and any related documents after review and approval by the village attorney. Trustee Fandesa, trustee Price Bush on the motion, second to trustee Fandesa, discussion. All favor. Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the agreement between Midwest State LLC and the Village of Boston Spa and the Boston Spa Public Library to have access to the hoopla digital services for minimum annual payment of $2,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and any related documents after the village attorney finalizes the agreement by making minor modifications in bills and applying for necessary information? I like the motion. Trustee Baskin, trustee Fandesa, discussion. All favor. Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving an addendum to the agreement between USG Water Solutions and the Village of Boston Spa for renovation work on the John Street Water Tower One, whereby the village agrees to the annual maintenance agreement based on the schedule reviewed at the May 13, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting? Two, whereby the village opts for an annual bond issuance, allowing the village to get refunded the aggregate amount paid for maintenance in case of non-performance and/or bankruptcy by USG. And three, allowing the village to pay for the initial cost of the John Street Tower renovation over three payments. This motion authorizes the mayor to execute said addendum after it is reviewed and approved by the village attorney. The addendum may be available before the meeting, and in fact, it was, but it was probably only about two or three hours before the meeting. If I remember correctly, I could send it to trustees when I received it. Trustee Fandesa, trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Is it? Just want to point out, we're, we're going to pay like $60,000 for that bond to make sure we don't lose the money.
Over time, over years, assuming they were to do a repainting toward year 13, then that would change the entire capital of it, because then they've done the work, so they've utilized the money at that point, some format or another, to that point.
Right. So, that's, that's optional, that is our choice, but you're feeling that it's prudent to do that.
The biggest concern that was discussed with me in this whole thing, and you were part of the group that had this concern, P. Martin, I know, had the committee advisory committee and others on there as well, Paul Ryan maybe as well, was the idea of, God forbid, they go bankrupt or don't perform, how do we get our money back, essentially? Part of their calculus is, of course, retaining the money, getting the interest. There's your warranty, basically, they pay you for buying the interest that they're collecting on it, that's their business model. But then the question is, well, okay, great, you've got that money, now what do we need to get it back for some reason? Because you didn't do what you said you were going to do. And that's the key component here. We checked with our insurer to see if there's an insurance product like this, and they pointed us in the direction of bonding as well. So, the bond is not in this one.
Yeah, it's just a little lot to pay for them to guarantee what they were paying them to do.
Right, but you saw the chart that Nick Raffnati sent around midnight last week, at one night, in the back and forth. He showed that basically, your worst-case scenario, and I even take the interest into account, was $100,000 savings by doing this, and that assumes that you have no major events that you would have had to pay out of pocket for with respect to maintenance issues, et cetera, in those 13 years. So, it was an interesting comparison that he did.
The other question I had, the, just paying for the initial renovation over three payments, is that a necessary part of this contract, or is that really a separate decision?
They bundle that if you take the maintenance. So, one of the added benefits of taking the maintenance is being able to pay in three payments upfront, one, then in a year, then in a year. So, that's just a bonus that will ease up the interest payments you'll have to pay with respect to, we can take a bond anticipation note just for the $300,000 something thousand that first year, instead of $1 million and change, and not pay nearly the interest you would have paid in year one, year two, a little less of the benefit from that, obviously, but you get the point that that's just something they do as an added benefit. If you're willing to take on a long-range contract with them, they're willing to spread out those payments for us.
Thank you.
No problem. You can tell it's baptismic by fire on this side, too, and all this, but there's a lot of good learning and education along the way.
And you taught the other towns.
Well, Don Rhodes is the person that was recommending this approach all along, but he also understood our concern with respect to not having access to that money ultimately, so that's why. He also wanted to make sure that we're comfortable with that aspect of it, and it's going to be no negative feedback as to the approach since that point. All favor. Opposed, motion carries. Need to do an add-on here, a motion approving the village's insurance premium for Nimer and other insurance carriers being brokered by Marshall Sterling. Trustee Fandesa, trustee Baskin, discussion. This is what I said on Friday late thereafter.
He was reminded how much I think.
It goes $126,000, which I can't tell you the exact increase on it. It's on, it was actually self-contained in there. Give me a second, I'll get that out right. No problem. Friday. Yes, thank you. Yeah, about $8,000, looks like from $118,127.06 to $126,460.74. Some things were good, some things weren't. We're taking a look at things that work and see what we can do. Are there any vehicles we can take off the road? Because I think the vehicle premium went up overall, but we also have more vehicles, I think, than are overall on the road, so that might make some sense as to why that's happening. There wasn't any major nature that came from that that was surprising for us. So, with respect to this motion, which was made, discussion allows here, because it's a spontaneous motion, the 90 seconds of time to the audience, anybody want to give a comment on this motion? Seeing none, anything on Zoom? Seeing none there? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Now, we also had some questions in matter of attorney, since I know you had a busy day, I didn't get to interrupt you on it, but there were questions about whether this should be for the June 1 event, Philly Park, doing a motion specific for that to close the park off or only that activity on a day from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.? It's a village event, so what's your feeling on that?
Have you ever closed the park for a village event before?
Not that we're aware of.
Well, closed insofar as we're not necessarily allowing the normal use of the building that day.
I don't see any reason people need to close the park.
How about just reuse and share it all?
You're saying you can't use the park?
Well, no, we're saying that essentially, Ray, do you want it?
The only restriction within parking, we want to, all the kids were hoping to get. We didn't want the cars being parked there where there's a lot of process driven.
Well, that wouldn't be closing it, that would just be redirecting traffic.
So, you're comfortable not having a motion with respect to that? Okay. Well, then, we'll have a little bit more of that event, of course, coming up soon, I'm sure. And also, I, we did say that workdays in Whistled Park for cleanup do not need, since it's technically a village, the branch should not need any approval as well, so I will, I'm sure.
We made a motion.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that we got that covered. So, with that, motions are over, at least for now. We may have one additional one later as the mayor's announcements. First, the VFW and the American Legion deserve our gratitude for what they were able to put together on a beautiful Saturday morning for the Memorial Day parade. Great to see so many of you out there supporting that vehicle parade and all of our groups and dignitaries, et cetera, that came out for that. So, thank you to everybody that took part in it and that organized it as well. I know that we began giving money back this year for this parade, $1,000 to this one, and we also budget for the next one. I think it's money well spent, based on what we're able to do here. Every politician that comes here always says what a special event this one is compared to some that they're walking through throughout the area. But it's a special day or a special weekend for us, and we appreciate that. Also appreciated, it was, for that, Ben, Jennifer and I and John Shave from the BSBPA today at Lincoln Park in Albany, being part of a press conference with Congressman Taco with respect to the potential $3.775 million for sidewalk funding, the federal funding that we had applied for last month, put in the request to Congressman Taco's office, and he chose Boston Spa as one of the 15 projects that he will be supporting in the fiscal year 2025 federal budget. Today, they honored five of them, basically, I call it the Route 50 corridor, five of them today, because it was the Glenville Hill Fire District Number Eight, their firehouse, Scotia, Bill Scotia, for their parks. We had the, well, all the itself for Lincoln Park, so they weren't really in the February 54 area, but then, Tom Milton for their, Tom Hall renovations and surrounding area renovations that they're doing, and us for our sidewalks. So, we are working toward that, and I got afternoon speak and represent what we're trying to do here and about our ADA plan and all the support that we've had with respect to just a basic social media we've put out about this so far. It's been a far-reaching and overall positive experience so far, and Congressman Taco was very interested in it. Just, he says he drives through the area all the time, looks around. We told him that he's got to try to spick and pick, he's been hearing all about it, so maybe at some point, we'll see him, he's a spick and pick, enjoying his time over there as well. But it was a great day, we appreciate everybody's support out there, and let's hope for the best that we are able to get to some funding from the federal government for the ADA implementation. That's all I have right now, let's go to our liaison reports. Mary, if you want to start? Bring that dude close to you.
The Hope for Children program is going to be held Saturday, Saturday from the 11th to 12th, as you said. Ray has more information to share, I'm sure. And the library, a lot of it touched on in the motions, we're going to be switching over to people. They are revamping and updating policies, they're installing security cameras, they're still working on the Capitol.
Very good, thank you very much. For that.
This is, start of BSBPA's very busy season, but to start, June 7, Free People for Belmont, they're having the family-friendly sort of events, Music at the gazebo in Whistled Park, of course, being crafts, free snacks from start, start, Star Point, thank you. Star Point Church and Islet, is that, Islet?
Islet.
Thank you. I don't know, I don't know how to pronounce that. Divine's Desserts will also be selling treats, and that is reminding what we have that secretary, do you think I would know that? I'm excited for this. June 15 will be the start of the farmer's market, and there are a lot of vendors. Just a reminder for folks that the Thursday market is pushed back an hour, starting at 7:00. And, 7:00, right, it was quarter to seven, gee, I'm so glad you're here.
She does the lunch well and helps us.
Man. And also, the Saturday market will be going on as usual. First concert in the park will be June 27, that is going to be the Boston Spa Community Band. And then they're hosting a number mixer at Real Employee Thursday, June 13, $10. There's going to be some food there, and everybody's welcome. But we're excited for the work that they do in the upcoming season, and we hope that people will support them and support our small businesses.
And back.
And the garage sale is not this weekend, but the weekend after, right?
It is the weekend after, it's the second weekend traditionally in June. We don't sponsor it, BSBPA don't sponsor it realistically. However, we all agree that that is the day, and by code, it does not count against your allotted number of permits, and no permit could be technically required for that day for the village-wide garage sale. So, that's why we maintain the idea that it's still there, because it's in the code, but nobody actually has adopted it in the last couple of years to say this is our event to put together.
All right, thanks for explaining that. I was wondering the ins and outs of it, if you just show up and do whatever you want. But there's a limit on number of permits a year?
Yeah.
For what?
Garage sales. Yeah, for individuals. I think it's four years, something like that.
And you actually need a permit to do a garage sale?
Yeah.
I don't know if everyone knew that. So, all right, but this time you don't necessarily.
Correct.
Okay. So, you just have a village-wide garage sale, anyone can sell what they've left of their property. Yes. My wife wants that one, I don't know.
Tell Julia she can have one.
So, anyway, that's usually a good, good event, and lots of people come for that.
Good luck to you.
The Caitlin does me the favor of actually writing out her, her update, so I might as well just read it to you, because it's nicely written. "The Park and Tree Board is paired with Friends of Whistled that organize a workday in Whistled Park this coming Saturday, June 1, with Sunday, June 2, as the rain date or time to finish." Anyone, anything left over from the Tuesday? "Work will begin around 9:00 a.m., but they welcome folks coming anytime in the morning that they can. They'll be planting annuals, weeding and spreading mulch around the garden areas. Volunteers can bring their own garden gloves, spades, shovels, rakes and kneeling pad, or whatever garden gear they prefer to use, but if you don't have these, don't worry, there'll be extra items to share. Bring a water bottle, it's still hydrated, also recommended, and a hat also is a good idea. We welcome volunteer to all ages for whatever duration of time they're available. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Park and Tree Board via the Facebook page or contact Caitlin Parwan or Judy Esposito, we're organizing the event." That should be great to make the, beautify Whistled Park. And the Committee on the Arts did not meet between now and last week, so not a lot of updates there. There is some banners that they're finalizing, should be over in the office now. I don't know if the whole board's seen them or not, but they look very nice, and they're about, I think they're in production. But I believe, I don't know if they're in the office, or you, we have an update on where they are, Jen?
DPW, they're taken.
Oh, okay. So, they're, they're in the process of getting put up.
They dropped them off and just took them up like an hour later.
All right. So, you shall see them, and let us know what you think. Thanks, that's it.
I actually, can I mention that?
Yeah, well, not yet, because if you got the same text I get, it still doesn't make any sense.
She sent it to you?
Yeah.
Okay, nevermind.
So, that's why I'm checking, actually, to see if I can get the exact information. As well, let's see. So, I don't have May's, the controller's number, so I'm not going to be able to get that one either. I'll read what she'd written, though, I should have read, May sales tax for Saratoga County was $13.03 million, it's not, it's $235,000 higher in Saratoga County from May of 2023, the village received $177,502 for their portion of sales tax on May 17, 2024. for the portion of sales tax on May 17, 2024. I was just checking to see if it wasn't maybe 13.3 million or maybe $28,500 was intended. But I would, she just sent me a screenshot. Okay, no, here it is. 13,030,000 was the correct answer. 13,030,000. Looks like they made an error when they wrote out there. I think it says on, we got $285,000. It's like it's $28,500. It's actually an increase. So I think the county had just moved the decimal point over incorrectly on that one. So nonetheless, we received 107 and right now meeting over $100,000 is greater than what I had actually projected the remainder of the year per month. So that's the important part for us right now. With respect to anything else in that report. Water and sewer reminder, June 1st is when cards will be going out. So make sure to get your meter readings in there by June 30th. Water bills will be mailed out August 1st. Bills taxes, we've completed work with Edmonds to upload tax information based on the assessed values for the village's property taxes. Tax warrant was done and submitted to the newspaper for posting. The village's tax bill should arrive on June 1st, 2024 with a due date of July 1st. Any tax received after that will incur penalties. So lots of stuff coming up very soon here with respect to new fiscal year and water and sewer and tax situations. Let's go to old business sidewalk reimbursement schedule. Why I bring it up? We've had a little minor back and forth on what we should do here because the questions I left you with last time were, okay, we all assume 50% is going to be the reimbursement, which is the legal limit in New York State. But what will the limitation be on that number for property? And how should we handle, somebody goes and puts in a new sidewalk twice in a five year period, the same property type of situation? Should they be getting a full reimbursement or not? Or is there something we should do? Got limited response on this question, so wanted to at least hash out a little bit here, maybe go to a motion. Ben, go ahead. You had a look at it basically.
Well, I just recalling the email interaction. On the, going back within five years, the questionnaire issue there is, I think, I'm not sure if this happened to my sidewalk or not, but should we have DPW before permits issued, go out and say, yes, this work needs to be done? Because if they do, then they won't issue a permit to do work if it doesn't need to be done within five years, for example. Like the only issue permit if what's needed. So I think with my sidewalk, I was given a permit. I don't know if anyone actually came out and saw the state of the sidewalk. I think the assumption is if you're going to spend money, your sidewalk must need it. But
I, I, I'm not hating that idea. Here was something I put together. The thought was properties that get a reimbursement, get the potential for 2.5% reimbursement per year after the year they get their first reimbursement. So in 20 years, they would be eligible for 50% again. However, that could be vetoed or, you know, changed by a decision by this DPW superintendent that indeed a portion of the sidewalk was beyond ADA compliance or something along those lines. But I just don't want people to willy nilly go out and think they're going to get a 50% reimbursement for taking out or replacing a good sidewalk already. And now we would have no recourse to say no to that or at least, you know, limit what we're giving them.
You don't want to require DPW go out.
Well, I'm saying basically hot project, what you're saying and what I'm saying here would work, I think. Basically DPW would have veto power over the 2.5% idea that is presented. We're going to go with that. So they could say, oh, this, these panels, this sidewalk absolutely needed to be repaired. Everything else goes a different reimbursement rate. We can do the math on that. I mean, that's not horrible. But then the other question is what's your limit for property on time number one, let's say?
Well, at one point we had suggested like 3,500, but I think that was like for 100 feet or something, like half of 100 feet. One of your feet. But we may have had less in the bank at that time in terms of allocation. So I don't know what you think is in terms of budget, what's feasible?
I was thinking in the 400, 4,500 range, to be honest with you. I am ambivalent toward which of those ultimately. If the idea is to get as much sidewalk replaced as possible, then obviously the higher figure makes more sense. I don't think we break the bank necessarily doing 4,500 in those situations. I don't know how many properties would actually clear that number individually.
Not a lot. And also it's always been lower than what we budgeted. It's not like we've gotten a stampede. So I'm fine with whatever you, with that higher number.
What are your thoughts? Mary also feel free.
I think my biggest concern was how we manage. I think one of my concerns was how frequently we kind of patch it out in discussion. Certainly want people to be able to take advantage of it, but we don't want multiple kids at the same sort of project, you know? So I think, I think we covered that as far as.
The biggest problems seem to be cornered properties that have the wraparound. And so that, that's where it gets a little much. But I don't know how many really still reach that number necessarily. $9,000 was a 4,500, let's say is the limit. $8,000, $4,000 is the limit. Any thoughts on your side?
Yeah, I don't think too many residents are going to have to put in their own money to replace the sidewalks. So I don't think too many are going to want to be repaired sidewalks. I don't need to be here.
Okay, so what is a reasonable approach here? Would you like to write it up between meetings and go that route? Okay, so we'll do that. We will hold off on a motion tonight and push forward with a schedule change for the next meeting. Curbing.
Sorry, thanks for bringing that up.
I think we had kind of gotten to the point where DPW is not going to be wanting to curb anyway. So.
Yeah, but it's very expensive and it's specialized. I don't know how feasible it is for individual owners to do that in a cost effective way.
Well, that's a third party that they're guiding too. So it's a question of why would you change the process? The 50% process would still apply to that as well. If you want to say that there's a higher maximum or something there, then maybe that's something we're discussing.
I think there needs to be because I don't know anything about curbs except what Sean has shared. He said it's very expensive. So I don't know.
So why don't you finalize a thought on what the maximum should be with, so maybe differentiate sidewalk and curb in the schedule and make sure that we have a different differentiation of maximums in those situations.
I guess the other question is when streets are upgraded, does that impact the curve?
We have at times like on Front Street assisted because it, storm drains and whatnot can be affected by how the state of the curve is. So yes and no. It depends on the street, depends on the situation. Okay, so we'll again work, but this time please do get something out because I'm hoping we can pass now. We are getting people actively doing sidewalks and they're a little shocked it's still 250 a square foot. So let's do them the thing.
Don't look down at me. I've been wanting to do this.
No, I just.
But yeah, I will, I will write, I'll put something in writing for everybody outside. And the other piece, it's a small piece, but it's still, when I see it, it always surprises me. The idea that our DPW will, will remove sidewalk for free. And I just feel like that, like that's, it's not in the code. It's in, it's in the fee schedule. It's a little like.
Carl and I went line by line. We thought it was in the code and then it's not in the code. Yeah, you got this one.
So I just feel like it needs to be either taken out or a caveat saying we'll only do that in the context of a plan to replace the sidewalk because we don't, otherwise we're sort of encouraging, we're incentivized to be able to take out their sidewalk. There's no prohibition right now to take out a sidewalk. I'm hoping we put that in the plan that you can, or the law that you can't take out a sidewalk.
I wouldn't be against a reasonable cost even when planned because we did find out about 80% of sidewalk replacements involved this actually, according to Jeff's estimates. Jennifer and I had reached out to ask him. So it does happen. And so if it's happening at that frequency, maybe the best idea is to say, hey, before you go and schedule us to do it, there is going to be a hundred dollar charge in place for this or $200, something along those lines to do it. So that at least they understand, you know, maybe your contractor should be doing it themselves. And generally, when there is a contractor, you said they obligated contractors to it anyway. So maybe this is the way to ensure that that's going to happen every time that I want. So that, a thought there. Again, let's finalize this for the next meeting and move forward at that point. But I want to give you that, that thought based on some late stuff that we filed out with Jeff.
Right. So yes, the contractor almost always take it or always, I think always take it away. The project.
The larger contractors do, yeah. I think it was the way that he described it. Not everyone does at large.
Are you okay with the idea that we say it's within the context of replacing or repairing some?
I'm fine with that and maybe putting a small dollar value on it just to make sure that people aren't going to just willy nilly have us do even under that context. Because that forces Jeff and his crew to stop everything at some point. That scheduling is going to affect something.
Sure.
You either run that transaction. Okay. No new business listed. I'll comment on any issue three minutes. And again, Zoom, folks, this would be a good time to raise your hand if you have a comment at this time. Liz.
Liz Cormos, 89, hi. On your recent discussion here on curbs, I think curbs are part of the street. It should be covered by the village, not by the homeowner. And that was something we did discuss before. Also, I'm very happy to see that you presented the ADA transition plan to Congressman Taco as a project. So thank Ben and Kate Titeman and Nathan Ward for working on that project as volunteers.
And thanks to you.
Well, thank you. And the only thing that might be a negative though is people here that you're applying for a grant to do the work that you're just talking about, they may delay fixing their sidewalk in the hope that there'll be a big grant coming in next year. So that's not it.
Then that means the chances you take sometimes to try to get 3.775 million dollars or something portioned there. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, great. Go ahead. There is nobody in Zoom, so it's all you.
We're out in 16 minute work development. First, I want to thank a bunch of people and if I miss anybody, please don't hate me too much. We got the Triangle then.
Yes, you did.
It was Kate Van Muren, Joanne Molt, Bob Hannah, who is my 92 year old rotary brother who was out there shoveling away. We also had this lady Millie something.
Brings behind the operation, I call her, right?
Yeah. And a whole host of other people. I want to thank the folks from up in Agway for giving us all the plants across. We were able to plant 44 plants, 45 plants in less than an hour. We worked our tails off. I also want to thank the folks from Union Fire because they then came over after some cleaning and watered it for us because we weren't sure when we were going to get some rain. Thankfully yesterday we got a good chunk of rain to fill that in. But it was a good project and the plants are now all perennial. They're going to look great. We may still from time to time highlight it with some, you know, geraniums or whatever, some of the annual plants, but for the most part that will cover and will fill in over the, over the next few years and be a real, a real showcase, I think. So again, thanks to them. And, you know, we asked for as much help as we could get and it's tough sometimes get people to volunteer and, you know, donate and that. So I was very pleased with the outcome. It just made our day. Now, if I can figure out how to get rid of two empty pallets from my yard, if anybody's looking for a pallet, I got them. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the upcoming event on Saturday, which is the Hope for Children event. It's going to be down at Kelly Park from 11 to 1. We have a lot of folks there and I know I'm going to miss some. I wanted to start out with Curtis Lumber. Curtis Lumber supplied us with a bunch of wood. And with that wood, what are we going to do with it? Well, we're going to try and do something that's meaningful, which is getting kids involved with learning about how to protect themselves from abduction, from exploitation. And it's going to include everything from physical abuse to online abuse. And our theme characters were the little boy and girl. And this is what the high school did. Jason Walton's class, they have this amazing laser cutter. They put a design into it and just goes, it cuts all these things out perfectly. They ended up, I'll be picking up the last bunch tomorrow and that'll put us up close to 300 of these that they were able to get out of the lumber that we gave them. Then we took them to the students and we started over at the road school. And these are what the kids came up with for their exhibits. How they wanted to do it. I have right now about 100 of these sitting in my garage on two foot paint sticks, ready to go on the ground. But they're all different. Everyone of them is unique. Everyone of them is neat looking. We're going to have a bunch of them to give out at the festival so that they can decorate them. But you can see kids are very, so many did it in permanent marker or some used paint. We're going to spray them all before with a lacquer so that they will be able to stay out a bit.
Your time's up, but I did want to ask you something. If I can, then you can probably finish your answer or whatever.
It's going to be.
Well. It's so far in three minutes, but either way, we'll just go this way ever out. But I was going to ask you, we talked, I think about food and games options and stuff like that. Is that still on the plan?
Absolutely. There's going to be hot dogs and chips and water and overall, you can again get donated or go out and purchase. I think a lot of the purchasing. And there's going to be crafts for folks to do. We got VACC working. We got the school system. There are counselors in that. So they don't have people like me teaching kids how to take care of themselves because that would be a disaster. We have the Dr. Duka, the superintendent of schools. We have the Office of the Aging. We have the Business Association helping out. There's just so many. I know I'm going to bleep some out, but there's so many groups that are involved in all this. We've got the Sheriff's Cadets hopefully going to be helping us with traffic.
What is your opinion of nature of traffic, by the way? You want people to park by the pool?
Yeah, we want folks to park at the pool. There's a lot of room there. I did speak with Jeff today. So DPW is, he wanted to know what, what is it we need? And I said, well, you are on my list to fall tomorrow, but we'll talk today. Just some garbage cans. Going to leave the restrooms open for us. And basically that's it. I promised nobody will go down there and park on the new blacktop, which they put in today, by the way. I was watching that for a while.
Pick a ball is near.
Yep. So again, it's been a very big event, very, very, a lot of moving parts to get together in that short period of time and didn't do a bad job. The other folks that helped out with the Triangle, also Mary and some of the other folks that are as part of the task force. I want to thank them. A great bunch of people to work with.
Yeah, June 1st, 11 to 1, basically.
I just said it because will you have a display afterwards, like in the parks anywhere?
Yep. We have, as I said, I got about 100 of these sitting in my garage on two foot posts. And those will be in the ground in Whistled or down at Old Iron Spring or wherever we can get them. Kelly Park, these are going to go directly on the playground. It's going to be much safer so we don't have anybody tearing them off or throwing them away because we all know that that's not the most. It's gonna be much safer, so we don't have anybody tearing them off or throwing them away, because we all know that that's not the most secure part. Sometimes people get a little bit anxious down there. So it was true right on, and I, I've got all the stuff to do that, so uh, they'll be mounted right up there, and they'll be there for however long.
Thanks, Ray.
I just wanna add on to some of this, if I may, right, no hurry, over.
Gina Rosen, Penno Glory Lane, is that still accurate?
Yes, that's still accurate. This um, this is a very sensitive topic that we're dealing with, and while we're doing education, we don't want it to be frightening. So we are building in a lot of fun, things that Ray neglected to mention, face painting, bubble area, games, crafts, the food. So it's gonna be an upbeat day, it's gonna be a fun day, but it's gonna be a very serious topic. But the serious part of it is more for the adults to go ahead and speak to the professionals that we're gonna have there. The kids are gonna be there more or less to have fun. Um, so I don't want it to be, to seem like it's a downer day, because it's by no means, we have a lot planned, a lot of fun for the kids. And I just wanted to stress that part of it. Um, but we've got a lot of moving parts and a lot of people and organizations that specialize in this and doing it in a manner that is not scary. So I just wanted to put that out there, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Anybody else in the crowd? Seeing nobody and nobody on Zoom, uh, the business agreement I loaded to for response, public comment, anybody?
Um, other things. Anyone else wanna go? The uh, the uh, one thing I, I sent you guys, I don't know if you have any opinions on it yet, I sent you some uh, no smoking signs, pre, they're pre uh, state program. And um.
I think they're great, I, I, maybe a little overkill on the number that was being suggested, but definitely let's get some out there, throw up by all means, I think it's what I felt.
All right, I'll let them know then.
The only question I have uh, with that, because now that we have the park code, park, park's code.
Yep.
Were we eventually considering putting the uniforms with a sign together?
Well, yeah, a rule sign for park, I think, was the way we were approaching it, but this, this would just work by.
Yeah, and something, one, one thing I've noticed is that parks typically have different rules and different signs, like, they might have, you see this in the cemetery. One sign for dog litter, another sign for smoking, another sign for something, so it's not always just one big sign, but it's okay.
Was there room for, sorry, no, I, I should be, um, is there a room on there for maybe like a sticker, the Boston Star sticker on there, just so like?
I'm sure.
I mean, yeah, the sign is what it is, like, they don't, you know, it's already made, but uh.
Yeah.
Like, we could probably slip something out if we wanted. Doesn't look bad.
It's for certain.
Um, oh, annual department presentations, I'm gonna revisit that, because I know, at one point, we did pass a board uh, resolution saying that was a good idea. And um, you know, then we were talking about doing it during budget time, but that didn't happen. So I'd just like to uh, encourage that to happen this year.
When the police department uh, moves officially, I'm gonna play again, get back in here and discuss that, for instance. So we'll probably kick off with him, uh, no matter what.
Yeah, and he, he's the one department that actually did it last year, so that was great. But um, feedback I've gotten is very positive, people like seeing what uh, departments are doing and seeing who's doing it, what they have to say, how they're spending the money. Um, I think it's a good PR thing for the departments. Um, so hopefully we can do that this year. But um, and then, is there any update on the, the DOA stats in terms of like, should we be um, putting in names for committees, or where?
So Norabel is going to be working on a sort of packaging for us to help promote and encourage people to sign up and apply to be a part of this committee to, to ensure that we have as, you know, could have a candidate pool for us to select from. Um, it'd be educational, like what is a BOA, um, those sort of things. So she emailed us today, I can't imagine it'll take this very long for that to come together, but.
She with Lobella, or she's real?
She's with Lobella, yeah. And we also uh, sent in the paperwork for the um.
The uh.
It's like, yeah, they give us money early, ahead of time, and.
Advance.
Advance, thank you.
Long day.
And I know uh, Norabel has sent that to the Department of State, so.
Great, thank you.
Everybody else? And note from here, uh, note for executive session, so can I get a motion that vouchers be audited in the meeting adjourned at, believe it or not, seven fifty-one PM Eastern Daylight Time. Trusty Bonanza, trusty Prince Bush, discussion, better about me any, I'll hold paper. Opposed, opposed, curious, see you everybody in June.
Clearly, Chris Sean was.
Yeah.
Do you have more questions on that?
So, all right.
If you have more questions, Taka, you call me, um, once more.
Sorry. I understand.
If you got stuff on, thanks for what you're doing, you got stuff on uh, Wiswol or any of the parks.
Oh, yeah, that's probably just a fact.
So then. It's like one point five percent. I think, I think it is one point five percent, it would be twenty-eight thousand, basically, to be a percent and a half, and that's what, that's why I was. About two percent. Okay.